Okay, we'll call to order a regular meeting. On Tuesday, January 3rd. All right, a single of minutes. Before we get to the three minutes that we need to approve, I want to note for the record and to be recorded in these minutes that on January 3rd, we approved minutes from the December 19th, 2022 meeting. And I want the record to show there was an error that we did not catch in those minutes. Under our old business, item A, there were two motions made that say motion carried. It should read motion failed. The votes were correctly noted, but they were misidentified as carried. So you will have to know this. With that, we have three sets of minutes to approve our last regular meeting on January 3rd, a special meeting on January 4th. Special budget workshop.
We can't hear you online.
Town quality is garbled.
All right, we'll do our best to make sure here.
Can't hear you.
It sounds like you're far away from the speaker.
All right, thank you. We'll do our best to hope that the recording is a little bit more clear.
How about now?
Much better.
All right, thank you.
It was too close.
Okay.
Want to just quickly briefly summarize what we just did?
Yeah, so we, there was a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January 3rd, January 4th, special meeting, and January 9th budget workshop. Discussion, seeing what we missed on the December 19th, I did take an opportunity to take a second and third back, look back, and specifically around those votes as well. And they looked like they are all correct this time. Any discussion?
Prior to that, we corrected the December 19th minutes. The outcome of the minutes.
Any discussion on the motion?
No, nothing.
Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Right, next item is present to speak. If you are present to speak, I ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Anyone in the room? No. Mr. Marshall, I see your hand up.
Not sure if you can see me, but excellent. Hi, guys. James Marshall, 46 Fisher Hill Road. I know it's been a busy couple of months. Just wanted to say welcome to Mike. Let's see on the board. But also, I wanted to just make a point and note, there was discussion a few months back related to the looking into the complaint process here in town. And, you know, any remedial efforts that, or anything that residents can do to actually lodge and get some sort of traction or response to a complaint about any board's permission in town. I know you were looking at it. And I just noticed that it dropped off all business. So I just wanted to, you know, call attention that it is still inactive. Item that I would love to see further clarity on, as you guys have the opportunity to address it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tella?
Nick Tella, 49 Myrtle. Just more so a question maybe you guys can answer later on, but as far as the selection for Mike on the Board of Selectmen, who vetted that selection and approved that it was okay? From an ethical standpoint and such, it was a lawyer involved in that at all? And then as far as the library, I was on their meeting the other day and they said that the town is basically telling them what they can do and can't do on certain items. One in particular was the garbage, how they were bringing it to the dump themselves, saving the taxpayers money. And now the Board of Selectmen have came down and told them that they have to get a garbage service, which is now going to cost taxpayers $2,000 when they were able to do that. I get that their tonnage is a cost, but I'm sure it's less than $2,000 a year. So, so I have to save for now.
Thank you. I'll just let the record show the Board of Selectmen have given no such mandate to the library as far as their garbage is concerned. So I'm not sure where that discussion came from, but. Moving forward, correspondence, you have a list of correspondence in your packet. They are all available in the Selectmen's office. If you have any comments or questions? All right, I'll move on to for Selectmen report. I have nothing new on the seat grant, which is the grant for the subject system and painting at the Old Town Hall. The school building committee, the school building committee is held. Well, you know what? We have our own representative on here. I have some notes, but would you like to update them?
Why don't you go ahead and I'll add anything is needed, sure.
So the SBC held several community engagements in January. The committee met on January 4th, was presented with an architectural concept plan. So actually several, two for Hall School and one for a new school. Those are meant to be a fit test to see if the project can fit within the space and meet the ed specs. Mike McHugh was selected as the chairman of the SBC at that committee and Ralph Chulis was named vice chair. Superintendent Stevens discussed the survey results that we had up to that point. And then the FAQ document had recently been updated. So folks can check the SBC website for answers to most of their questions. Discussion was held on the referendum process and the timeline that will be necessary later in this meeting. I have a little bit of information for this board on our role in that. And the next regular committee meeting will be this Wednesday, January 18th. And on January 26th, there will be a community forum at Hall School at 6:30 PM.
I would add that Ian Groschon was named Secretary for the School Building Committee at that meeting as well and want to reinforce the importance of public involvement, particularly with the meeting coming up and the public event on the 26th. As we approach the potential of committee decisions and the potential of making recommendations to the public for a major decision, the public engagement is very important. I would also note that coming up at this meeting tomorrow, the previous meeting, there will be a finance subcommittee meeting at 5:30. And then at the regular meeting, we'll see the revised or tuned up, presumably final draft of the fit test from the other architecture firm that we hired. So they'll be doing a presentation in electronic mode, so it'll be visible to everybody. And I believe they're also going to bring a couple of presentation boards so that people in the room can see. I'm not sure if they'll have them printed in time for tomorrow night, but they will definitely have them in time for the 26th. So that people will be able to stand up in front of a larger printout of those fit tests. And just reinforce, those are not final designs, as we've talked about. Those are fit tests to see if it is possible and to give us more ideas and food for thought for the community.
Thank you. So in the future, Mike is the representative of the Board of Selectmen, so we'll have him give updates. Our Lot sip project, this is the sidewalk project from Hall School down Route 32 to the Mills. We are, our 90% design plan should be completed by the end of the month. From there, we'll submit to CROG. CROG is our Connecticut Region Council of Government for review and comment. And then they'll go to Department of Transportation. And while that process is happening, we'll be likely preparing the RFP for construction. So when we get the final plan approval, it will be ready to go. We've discussed the truck leaves, the truck that was canceled on us, but I have a little bit more information we'll talk about in this meeting. ARPA, the public hearing was held on Monday, the 9th of January, so last Monday, and the projects before the commission were discussed. None of the projects were moved to a vote after the public hearing. We held off on taking any action. We'll meet again in a special meeting next Monday at 1:30 PM. So that's January 23rd. And at that point, I anticipate there will be discussion on all the projects we heard at public hearing and potential action on some of those requests. There still is a shortage of funds compared to the requests we have. So either partial or whole projects will not be able to be funded. So the ability for some of those present or requesters to find funds somewhere else will really come into play. Staffing updates. I don't see Kelsey on the call. I'm very sad to report to you that I accepted a resignation from Kelsey. She's been with us for 18 months. And if you've had any interactions with her, you know that she's well versed in the municipal world and is an incredible asset to the town of Wellington. I was hoping she's currently collecting taxes in Franklin at her other role. And so my guess is they kept her pretty busy there. So we'll be posting her position as soon as possible. She has given us a very generous time before she leaves us. Her last date is February 17th. I will tell you, she is leaving to make more than $15 more an hour than we pay her currently. So you hear the regular discussion about pay. So that on top of no commute makes a difference for her. So she would love to stay with us. We would love to stay with her. But there's some factors that I can't pick up her town and put it right next to Wellington. So I anticipate in the coming weeks, you'll probably hear from her. So it's a big loss. She is able to contribute to many departments and her coordination is amazing. So if you know anyone who might be interested in the first selectman admin role, they should contact our office.
Could I just comment? She serves sometimes probably outside of what her job requirements are as sort of a safety net for a lot of things that happen in town government. She catches when some particular group needs a meeting and needs a room set up or needs a Zoom link, or that someone is potentially going to miss some notification requirement. She's, she's done a great job of helping to sort of keep us all organized.
Yeah, you know, often we say some of those above and beyond. Kelsey is the very epitome of above and beyond. And, you know, jumps into whatever department she can, even if it's just, you know, making sure that the questions or things you have to leave here are taken by someone until the correct individual can help you. She doesn't hesitate. So it's certainly a loss for us and a benefit to, to her next position. So.
I'll echo those same sentiments. I mean, there's, there's just a lot of coordination that happens outside of this particular meeting. You know, reviewing things, getting documents to us and all that. And she's been extremely helpful in coordinating all that. So she will, she will be missed.
Her reach into many state offices and just from her, you know, her previous roles outside of the town of Wellington have given her kind of a reach all over the place. So she's able to connect us with folks. So yeah, I could go on and on, but sad to say that she, she'll be leaving us. You know, hope for a miracle. All right, that brings us to Public Works.
Can I just ask a question before you leave the report? I know I mentioned to this, I mentioned this to both of you on the board when you were looking for candidates who are interested in the board, that some of my interests to help keep moving, if I were to come on the board, would be things like the emergency communications plan. And I know that used to be something that was in your report. So I'm just wondering if, if there's a status we can talk about now, or if we can deal with it in the future and get it on our radar to see where the construction of that program is.
Yeah, so we are ready to move forward with that. And so, Mike, maybe offline, we can talk about, if you want to pick up that baton and run with it.
So that gets for bringing it up, right?
That's right. Especially during budget season. What we need to do is we need to put into place, and you were on that commission. So we have the program in place. We need, it's something people need to opt in, opt into. So we're talking about the emergency communications. And so using the Everbridge system, which we have in place for us, we tested it out with employees. We actually used it a couple of times for weather related for employees because they were all able to opt into that. And so we need to work on a plan of how it's used so that then we can begin getting, and I believe we can get, begin getting people to opt into it at any time. But we want to make sure we have a plan for what is they're opting into and how we plan to utilize it. Selectman Blessington was here with us when we first rolled this out. And I know some of his concerns were, we don't want it to become spam, right? We don't want to use it because the, I'll use the PTA, I don't want to need to pick on them, having a bake sale, or because this is happening down the street. And so finally, so we need to bring that group back together. I have some sample plans from surrounding towns. Devise our structure for how to use the system and then get people into it and then get it up and running.
Very good.
So, yes, I will gladly hand you that baton. Going to be sorry asked for that. Okay. And anytime during my updates, if you have something you want to add or question, don't hesitate. I will maybe at this time take a moment to answer to the comment on the ethics ordinance. We're working on drafting that to bring to you. I actually took a pause as we worked on the draft while we had a change, knowing that we may have a new Selectman onboard and figured that was a good time to take a look at it. So you'll see in the coming probably month, a draft ordinance for us to begin to discuss. All right, Public Works, Troy is with us tonight.
All right, roadside mullings still going on around town. We've installed quite a few new stop signs around town. Some have been missing, some have been run over. So we've been out doing that. We've washed the trucks, we cleaned them organized, we did an inventory of all the signs up there to see what we had. We've chipped and picked up trees around town, worked on maintaining the fleet. And we did a pretty good sized job down at the fire department installing a new gas line and putting a pad for the propane tanks down in one of the fire departments. So put some Jersey fairies around it. That's what we've been doing.
I don't want to shortchange your efforts in the work at the fire department. So January 3rd, we approved the vendor for their project. It was the next day, I believe. They needed the pad port as the old furnace was being removed and they were getting delivery more sooner than anyone here knew was happening. So kudos to Troy and his staff who really jumped in and made that project happen for them and efficiently. And Chief Moore did reach out to sing the praises of our Public Works crew and the phenomenal job they did in the work there. So I want to pass that along to everyone here. As far as the public works though, that brings us to the status of the director's vehicle. So at our last meeting, we approved moving from, away from the truck we had that had been canceled on us into a Chevy Tahoe. And so if you recall, that left us with some unspent funds from what we had already borrowed. So I've been working with our business manager to determine what the best next steps forward are. And again, we had talked about, I believe this process needs to go back through the whole process. We have proved something, we'll go back to Board of Finance, we're working on what their exact action should be. Because they approved appropriations of dollars in our budget that included the CIP plan and that included this vehicle. And then as we lease, we don't go back to them for an appropriation of the dollars because it's a lease payment. So, but I do believe they should give their blessing, if you will, to the change that we've made essentially to what we were purchasing. And then take that, that'll come back to us to call a town meeting and then call a town meeting. So that town meeting who approved a plan that had a pickup truck would now approve this Tahoe. So that still left about $11,000 left in escrow from monies we had already taken. And we knew that there was a potential of a penalty, which would be 10%. So of that $11,000, that would be $1,100. So do we risk losing the $1,100? The bank approves the new vehicle. The other option we have is to spend $11,000 on another purchase we have. So.
Didn't we think, didn't we talk about lights and radios?
We did. So I went to Troy and said, look, we've got some more money here. What can you spend? Troy can't come up with that much in lights, et cetera. So we would be finding something else to spend this $11,000 on. I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think Jimmy had expressed the same opinion at one point, just to spend money because we took it in. We only took the money because we believed we were purchasing a vehicle at that cost. So in working with our finance folks and leasing folks, Donna has given us our options. The remaining funds that are not spent can be used to make the next lease payment. So we didn't spend, let's say, the whole $11,000, we turned around and made into a lease payment if we didn't have a penalty. If we get a penalty, we lose $1,100, we take $9,900 and put it towards the next lease payment because we've already received the money. The other option is, you know, again, avoiding losing the penalty at all by finding the difference in money to spend on something. I just don't know that I could get behind buying something just to buy something. But we've already borrowed the money. We've begun payments on it. So I think the right thing to do is first, we're attempting, the last communication was this afternoon, they were going to reach out to find out what the likelihood was that we could get that penalty waived. But at the end of the day, it's, it's a relatively small amount of money. I don't want to see us lose any amount of money. So I'm hoping the circumstances could make them possibly say yes. But it's a bank at the same time they are a business. And then use the remainder of the money to put towards a payment. And hopefully break down that principle a little.
Just a question on the, part of our discussion was that we also needed to check with the leasing company to make sure changing the specification of vehicle was not going to be a problem. I'm assuming by how you're delivering this, that that is resolved.
Yeah, so it was, you know, the bank ultimately needs to approve it, but they didn't see, she did not see a real concern with that portion. But they, there is, that does need to go out to the bank for them to approve the change in vehicle. And we've obviously explained how we got there. It's, you know, it's the really the penalty that comes into play. And whether or not we purchased, when Troy took a look altogether, I believe it was somewhere around maybe $2,500 he could spend. And that would get the lights, the radio. I think we had some firefighters in the room, we're talking about as much as $8,000. We don't need that kind of, we don't need those kinds of lights.
We don't need red lights.
Not at all. So, you know, when I brought this option to Troy, he's like, look, I can buy all the stuff I want. I'm not going to come anywhere near that. And we both agree, we don't want to just buy stuff.
I think these companies are very reasonable. And maybe if we just point out the business we've done with them in the past and then we, you know, they're still, you know, a candidate for a future business and, you know.
Yeah, I'm really hoping the set of circumstances.
Providing to help and help us out favorably. I think we're going in the right direction.
Would you like us to include those additional light costs to bring that down a little bit? Or do we just say the purchase price of the vehicle and that's it? That's all we had moved on.
I, I think that the, the equipment that is for that vehicle is a logical thing. It's the same thing the fire department's doing with their vehicle. They have a vehicle on order. They're going to come back and look for money for the equipment that's going in the vehicle. If, if it was a vehicle with a plow, he would potentially be ordering the vehicle and a plow and outfit for it maybe. It's all, I think it's all very reasonable that you would get the vehicle and what you're outfitting it with.
So when I go to Board of Finance, my dollar amount, you'll see it'll be different than the Tahoe. We'll add the lights into, I think Troy was waiting for.
I was waiting.
A final quote. But it's under $3,000. So probably close to the $2,000 range.
Goad them with everything and.
And then we're just going to.
Trying to negotiate with the financing company to avoid a penalty, you know, and hopefully their, their good spirits will allow us to consider them in the future for future business.
I won't go that far because we bid things, we go on bid. So I, by no means can tell them, we promised them future business. So, but, you know, I think that, no. So the hope is there. If they look at the circumstances, our business conduct with them.
I wouldn't be straightforward to say we're hoping that we would not charge a penalty.
That's, oh yeah, we're definitely asking.
Very blunt on that one.
Okay. So we'll, there'll be another discussion of Board of Finance later this week. All right, old business, we have none tonight. So as far as new business goes, and first item is refund, tax refunds. So I will move to refund Keith R. Palmer an overpayment in the amount of $303.22.
A second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carrying. I will move to refund Leo A. Passardi Jr. an overpayment in the amount of $7.51. Second by Mike, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I move to refund Frank W. Malik and Catherine D. Malik an overpayment in the amount of $14.69. Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is communication from the treasurer. You all should have a copy of the letter that came to us. And Jim, I think you've seen this already from our treasurer. And she has some concerns with the way in which her pay is handled on top of the amount of pay. So the first thing I'll say is, while we can weigh in on what the salary is, the treasurer salary goes directly through the Board of Finance. It is not in the Selectmen's budget. It's in the general government budget, but it falls directly to the Board of Finance where they have complete oversight. So I think our, our voice would be welcome in the discussion, but we do not have the ultimate authority. She's asking that instead of the stipend pay that we typically give to elected officials, so that's the first selectman, the treasurer, and the two registrar voters are paid a set fee and it is paid in equal payments over the course of years, so 26 equal payments. Lori feels that she would rather see it move to an hourly pay and keep a time card and be paid for the hours that, that she's paid on top of an increase in pay. She's attached for you her hours. She, like our registrars, they both keep track of the hours they are here. And so you can see the number of hours that she typically puts in when she's here. Now, when, you know, we're looking to fill this position and it's, this is an elected position. So, right? So when people are asking whether or not they'd be interested in running for the treasurer's position, oftentimes someone will tell them it's 10 hours a week. It's about 20 hours a week.
Now you actually have some data.
It's right. So there, there's some here and Lori feels like some weeks, it is, you know, four or five hours. And others, it takes more. And she feels. And others, it takes more, and she feels it would be, um, in the town's best interest to, um, pay as someone is here, and you can see, um, her request and as her request goes forward to uh, the Board of Finance for budget season, she, she will be asking for an increase in pay. So, from what I see, we do not have to make a decision tonight, we can, you know, begin the discussion if there's information anyone feels they need um, to better make a decision, let me know, we can get as much data as, as we can. But whether or not we, you know, move this to, uh, a time carded position, our elected officials do not submit any kind of time sheet, our salary employees submit a time sheet strictly for paid time off purposes. Um, so this would be a change and we have language in our personnel policy that speaks to, um, how they're paid as well, so there would need to be some adjustments made there.
So the, so the good thing now is now you have some actual hourly data to go by. And we, we always thought like, well, maybe it's ten hours or twenty or varies around, but now you have some actual hours. The other thing is, I, I want to ask, uh, I thought we hired, I thought we hired or we're going to hire somebody to do some of that treasury work.
Oh, we did, so they've been split off, and lumped in, so there was a definite change in the hours.
That's how some of the hours got.
But we've also changed banks, so there was a big change from People's Bank to M and T Bank.
Yeah.
And if anybody knew anything about that, it was not the easiest transition for anyone. There was a lot of additional work that the treasurer needed to do.
Right.
And, uh, you know, some days she spent most of her time here on hold waiting for the bank and, and she talks about some of those things in her communication to us. So yes, those jobs have been peeled back, so the amount of work she's doing is, um, it does not include that, I mean, you can see last January, um, in February, some of those hours were less. And you had a seven hour, uh, week, a two hour week, and then a twelve hour week, so it, you know, it fluctuated depending on the time of the month. Um, you know, big statements come in, there's some reconciliation to do in there. And, um, you can see she's noted, um, the total hours per month off to the right. And then in August, um, and then October, she put in fifty hours, you know, going from nineteen and twenty-two hours. So, you know, there's, I, I can see, um, why we might want to discuss, she, she has some other concerns. You can see outlined here, I have spoken with our town attorney, um, and we can, you know, get their input on some of the other concerns she has. As, uh, being considered a salary employee, um, or stipend at that. But for us, it's, do we look to move this to an hourly paid position?
I think we should just recognize that the hours are, you can see the three hundred and sixty-eight hours per year, just divide it out, because it's about seven hours a week. It was all, there was always a question of how many hours does the treasurer work or what's, what's required, there seems to be a lot of little things. Cut, you know, account, one, one year, it was accounting systems, this year it's bank changes, there's, there's other reconciliation and checking projects that, that need to go on, it, it's probably realistic and we should probably continue to monitor it and, and, you know, maybe we should just say, okay, it's three hundred and sixty-eight hours. So it is, and you just, then the stipend is adjusted according.
Going back to the, your earlier comments when you started with that, um, I'm trying to figure out what our, our is versus the Board of Finance's part in, in resolving this.
Yeah, so the, the, um, budget portion would lay into the Board of Finance.
Sure, yeah.
For us, it's how we treat the position. Um, and, uh, you know, are we considering them an hourly? Um, because it's not an employee, if you will, it's an elected, it's an elected official. Right, and if we change that, are we looking at changing the model for all of our elected officials? That's all for, um.
I was also thinking back to the registers. I was thinking back to the registers, because I think it was three or four budget seasons ago, we had this conversation with the registers and they were way out of sync. If you looked at the hours they worked versus the amount of money, they were earning way below minimum wage and.
They're in the two dollar an hour range.
And so we did, uh, sort of a step over two budget seasons to bring them up, um, to a, a better place. And so I'm, I'm feeling like there's some, there are some solemn, solemn similarities, uh, in this situation.
And what we don't have is how, you know, this is simply from Lori, just from, just from our treasurer. This is not, um, it's not been something that has been run by our, uh, registrar voters to see, you know, how they feel about it, but I will tell you comparatively speaking, because as, as we're working towards budget season, um, they to keep track of their hours, um, for their own personal information and based on their pay and the number of hours they get, they're somewhere in the two dollar, between two and three dollars an hour range. If we're paying them by the hour, obviously unacceptable to anybody, um, but, I would, it gets a little bit hairy, um, because I would, just like our regular positions, I have no doubt these are underfunded as well. Again, if I, uh, be the only other elected official, um, that's paid, if I were to show you my hours compared to the salary, um, and then ask for additional funds, it would be astronomical. So, it's what sort of model do we want to look towards? Do we want to wait and see how the, um, budget request lays out with the Board of Finance while, you know, we think on how we'd like to handle the timekeeping portion of it?
I think last year we ended up something like that, said, gee, we'd like to do more, but we can only adjust so much and that, and that's where we ended up, I think, with. I think that's where we end up with the registers. And you're, you're going to be looking at the same thing, you're going to look at everything in aggregate and, and do your best to try to make those adjustments, I think we should prioritize those type of adjustments over, over other hirings.
Well, specifically with the treasurer, Lori saying, we cut back from the larger salary, it was about thirty, in the thirty-six thousand range um, to her current salary, and she's feeling like that's just not enough because the number of hours didn't completely come down to what we thought it would be. So she thinks the salary should go, so that's the first, right? So, cat, will the Board of Finance adjust that salary increase and she is the, the hour is to benefit it, and then how do we want to move forward with the timekeeping? Um, process for elected officials? Some towns have gone to a change in, in having them record their time, others have not. So.
I think, I think we should, uh, let the budget process play out a little bit and see where we go and then, um, have more discussion, uh, it has come to my mind a couple of times that we have a couple of different models of how we do things here and that's probably appropriate, but maybe some of them should be looked at, um, even our appointments, we have, I'm assuming based on previous conversations, our appointed building official is paid in one manner because we have a contract with another town, but our appointed fire marshal, I don't know if he even turns in any kind of accounting of hours, and so that salary which has had very little increase over the years for the fire marshal, that, that person might be getting paid two dollars an hour also.
Right.
So, you know, maybe, and appoint, appointed positions are obviously different from elected, but maybe we need to kind of look at cleaning up some of this.
Yeah, and I would say the same thing, there is no timekeeping for those, for, for that position in particular.
Right.
Um, so, okay. So give some thought to it, um, maybe fire off some of your suggestions for now through Kelsey. Um, and then we'll, um, you know, be actively part of the process at Board of Finance and see what direction they're going, how this conversation leans off, lands in that time. Okay. All right.
I like the fact that we got this information ahead of time and can think about it a little bit rather than making a snap decision, so.
Yeah, and just know, I may put something on as action on a meeting, the action is dependent on this board. If we feel like we need more information, we'll stop and, and go get it, uh, very few things are emergent and we must. Like, they feel like there's more, but if the process, the length of time is up to us, I'd rather do it right, not fast. All right, so that brings us to school building bonding, um, process. So I wanted to talk, uh, to this board about our role in the, uh, potential school building project. So the, currently, the SBC is looking at two projects, an alteration, extension of hall school, and I use that term because that's the state's term, so an alteration, extension at hall school or a new school on a new site. On February first, the plan is for the SBC members to vote to take a project forward to and we play a role, um, in that referendum process because this will be a selectment initiated referendum. So the process I'm going to outline to you is, um, from my office, me specifically working with uh, attorneys and our bond counsel, because there are very specific questions that have to be asked if we're borrowing money, um, notes and bonds, and if, um, there's a school construction project, OSCGR from the state, the Office of School Construction Grants and Review, they have language that needs to be. And so putting all of that together along with our statutory process, because we do not have, um, a town charter and making sure we check all of the boxes. So the process is such, the SBC will select a project on February, on or about February first, the plan is February first right now. From there, the Board of Selectmen will, um, get that project recommendation from the SBC. And then we would refer the appropriation in this being, at, at least at a meeting, the appropriation and a borrowing authorization to the Board of Finance and to PZC, and it goes to PZC for an A dash two four review. Both, both the Board of Finance and PZC have to sign off on this, and when I say sign off, um, approve the appropriation, uh, borrowing appropriation and then on A two four recommendation in order for the referendum to happen.
They provide a report.
Yes, and they have to be in favor. So the eight dash two.
Yeah, the, the eight dash two four language is, is a little, um, nebulous on that, but essentially have to provide a report.
So.
Yes.
Um, the Board of Finance then recommends the appropriation and the bond note authorization. The Board of Selectmen would receive the recommendation, set the date for a town meeting um, and approve forms of bond resolution and a legal warning, um, and notice of meeting of the town meeting and the referendum would come, um, would be forwarded to the town clerk. Um, at the town meeting, a resolution would be read and discussed. The ballot question would be announced or questions would be announced at that meeting and then it would adjourn to a referendum that would be between seven and fourteen days of the town meeting. So items, uh, two and four that I've read, the Board of Selectmen referral and the Board of, uh, and our recommendation in moving to a town meeting could be collapsed into a single meeting, subject to Board of Finance appropriate, uh, approvals. Um, there could also be two separate meetings where the Board of Selectmen then, um, refers those items to Board of Finance and PZC. And then Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance could have a joint meeting and make their, um, have a single presentation of the project from the school buildings committee. So they're hearing the same information in separate boards, then making their, um, resolutions forward. And that language will all be provided to us, this isn't us suggesting what the motion looks like, a motion on the fly, these are very specific questions, um, that will come to us from, uh, and will be, come to us from Bond Counsel, they will prepare them and then they will be vetted by a town attorney. So working with all of those, um, groups, I'd be sharing the same, um, information to Board of Finance so they understand their role in the process. Um, and I did have an opportunity today to speak to our zoning agent so, um, we can, uh, make sure the items are on agendas for the planning and zoning. Um, once an official, uh, referral from this board moves forward to PZC. So once, once they have a project, they're going to send a communication to this board, this board is going to meet and agree. Ideally, we can't get to the referendum until there's agreements, you know, positive votes on all these things to move these all items forward. And part of this process for me is mocking up a, um, potential timeline of all the meetings, making sure we meet all the legal requirements that are necessary, and so right now, um, we're looking at an end of March referendum, so the twenty-first, twenty-eighth of March, depending. I think the only thing I, um, had wrong in the process as I ran, um, my initial timeline was thinking that we needed to separately warn the town meeting and then from the town meeting, warn the referendum, which is our typical process. But this is, um, atypical and is a selectment initiated referendum, so that first warning of a town meeting will actually be a joint warning, um, and it will be, um, I have the language in here, but that should be a, a warning of both. So the day we set the town meeting, the date for the referendum will already be warned. So the, the dates will be out there from the same time. In that timeframe, once we warn a town meeting and the referendum, there's a blackout period for the ability to um, expend town funds, um, on the project at all. So a mailer could go out only if it was the appropriate explanatory text that comes from the town clerk. Um, and we have an ordinance that's, and it, it matches the statute that speaks to, um, how that can done, that has to go through the town clerk and the town attorney, those are statutory requirements. So once we call that joint meeting, then, um, well, let's say, you know, the school building committee couldn't then spend um, any money to go out there and say, you have to, um, vote for this project because of this reason. There would be very, um, specific explanatory language and it can only be explanatory, not, um, leading.
Good.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, um, so when we have a, when we pass a budget annually, uh, eighteen million dollars, we, we, we usually follow a process of a public hearing and then a town meeting. Uh, I'm just curious, it seems like we're missing that public hearing thing, the official public hearing.
Sure.
I know we're having outreach things, but it's a little bit different.
So, yes and no, because we're not calling it a public hearing, doesn't mean it's not their public forums and that is, that is the right avenue to take. And I'll let Mike as the SBC chair a- as well, uh, and our representative to weigh in on that. The town meeting is the other appropriate place to have this discussion, and this is not our annual budget process. That also is laid out, um, in statute for us and that calls for the budget hearing, that calls for very specific items that we do, this referendum, um, is following the select, uh, uh, a selectment initiated referendum in state statute. So all of the, um, meetings we have to have are are very specific and they're, they've been laid out for us.
So what's, what's that statute? Do you have that there, Brian?
Oh, I think it was mixed of a couple of them.
Yeah, it, it, it is, and I don't know that I have the, I'll let you speak to something.
Sure, so I can comment a little bit on that, that concern has been discussed, Jim, also at the SBC meetings, you may or may not be aware, um.
I bet you it's many, but not all.
Yeah, and that concern was discussed particularly in the last school building committee meeting and, um, so the conversation took sort of two paths, one path was, is there a legal requirement for something that we actually call a public hearing? Which we have, um, through lengthy research, um, been assured that this process is in fact different from the budget process statutorily, and so there is no legal requirement for a gathering called a public hearing. Um, the purpose of the public hearing for the budget is to show it to the people and have question and answer. So the, um, putting aside the legal requirement, what is the actual functional value of a public hearing? And that is the question and answer, it's get, letting the public know there's something big coming. And, um, so that you can say that the meeting, like the one that's on the twenty-sixth coming up is satisfying that public function of letting the public know there's something to be talking about that's coming in the future. But there is definitely some concern that that doesn't have the same, um, sense of drama to the taxpayers as when they get a notice of a public hearing, that may be more attention getting for some people. And, um, so I wouldn't be surprised if it here, it discussed more at this meeting tomorrow, at the school building committee meeting.
And the town meeting that will be held prior to will serve as, um, a, a public hearing, if you will. So the resolution will be read, the questions, the ballot questions. So the resolution will be read, the questions, the ballot questions will be read, and then discussion, right? We don't, we don't limit discussion in the town meeting, it's just then adjourned to referendum. So it doesn't end on a vote, the vote actually happens at a referendum. This process, just so you know by statute, and I'll get you the number and send it to you. This process by statute allows the selectmen to, or the town meeting to decide this question. I'm not sure who thinks that would benefit us, I don't.
Yeah, it could be decided without going to referendum.
Correct, it could be, it could be.
I don't think any of us believes it's a good idea.
No, our legislative body is town meeting, so this could be decided at town meeting. So we basically be initiating a referendum so that we made sure that everybody had the opportunity to have a, a voice there. So I, I think that's important that everybody gets a vote.
And, and as a matter of fact legally. A, a properly qualified taxpayer from the town at that town meeting could make a motion to approve it. And if the town meeting did approve it before we adjourned to referendum, legally it would be the say. But of course, I think everybody on all sides of this issue agreed that the best means of getting the most amount of people. To speak their mind is through the referendum, so that would be our intended process.
And I would anticipate there would be healthy discussion in town meeting. Because by then, we will have one project. Many. Communities, I won't say all, but probably the majority have been working all of. Putting all the efforts that we're putting into two projects into one. So while we still have some unanswered questions, most towns know the project they're going into long before we have. Right, so our situation is unique and, and so we're still looking at two projects. So early, early, very early on, Mansfield determined they were going to go from three schools to one. So they didn't look at options of renovating all three schools, they made that determination before they moved forward in their school building process. We, we made a concerted effort to keep going down the path of two options, even though the request that came from the. Board of Education was for a new school. And so I thought, I, I remember in, when this started, feeling the same way as the SBC does now, that we need to investigate. Both path, take that information, bring it to the public, to the School Building Committee, can then recommend a pre-k through eight school, which is their charge. And then take that to a potential referendum. And so that's the, the path we're on. So there are a few more things to line up as far as meetings and timeframe. And then I will, this board will be choosing those dates, I will have laid out a. A draft, you can see I have a working draft of all of the meetings to kind of, we had to put them in place to kind of see how everything. Load and make sure we have everything that needs to, to go. And we'll get a full package from our bond counsel on the resolutions that need to be made. And the timeframe, and you know, obviously they all have to be properly warned meetings. So we need to be very, very careful that something wasn't warned, you know, with a twenty-four hour advance notice, that it wasn't. Posted in the right place, in the right timeframe. So there, this is a very important process, like all of our meetings, but we really, there's, there's a lot at stake here as we potentially ask residents. To spend, you know, potentially in excess of sixty million dollars for our project. So I anticipate that February first date being the time where things move forward. It does seem like things are, you know, moving quickly and there's a lot and we're working in hairy time. As you get towards the end of something, there are more steps. And so there, there are just a lot of moving parts as we get closer to a potential referendum. Questions, feedback, things you aren't sure if you want to know?
And the, the only other thing I can think of, I know Representative Nuccio reached out to us, she's now a ranking member of the Appropriations Committee. Offering to help with things like that. I don't know if we've reached out to her or not, it certainly was. I don't know, we, we, we.
So the appropriation would become, we, we have to have a project before we can ask for our appropriation, so that's the first step.
She has expressed in the past, in just meeting people casually in town, the same thing that. When it comes time for these things to be moving forward. That we would certainly be able to reach out to her office for efforts on our part. There could be anything from helping with the application for the space waiver. That she may be able to help, her office may be able to help with getting that approved through legislative means. Also potentially, if there are any changes in the reimbursement rate, she does stand ready for that. And, and certainly if this stuff all moves forward, we go to application phase, we would, I think it would be in everyone's interest. And I'm sure, you know, as long as I'm SBC chairman, that we would avail ourselves of those possibilities. You know, the, the situation in Tallinn was very unique and had a lot of attention. They got a very high reimbursement rate, I don't anticipate we'll ever see that. But we will absolutely be knocking on her door and she has already offered, she, she's ready for that conversation.
Right.
Yep.
So, you know, I think our state representation and, and. Speaking for us at, at the state and helping us to get the, the best that we can out of our state dollars that go to Hartford are very important. But first, we have to, we have to follow the local process first.
Sure.
So as, as we get through the local process and move to the state, yes, absolutely taking advantage of all of our state representatives, our state senator. And in getting information we need is going to be critical. All right, so if you have, if you have any questions as the. As the weeks go by, please don't hesitate to shoot off an email and we'll make sure I get them answered at our next meeting. And on Thursday at the Board of Finance meeting, I asked Lori Hall, who's our bond counsel, to come out. She's not able to be in person, but she is going to Zoom as she's traveling to help answer some questions from the Board of Finance as to their role in this process. And so certainly if there are any additional questions while we have her there, I think it's important to ask. So if you have any, any specifics, please let me know. All right. The last new business item we have is ordinance for past due taxes. So I see our revenue collector is on the call. She is asking us to reconsider an ordinance that has gone to town meeting in the past. Before she speaks, I'll just share with you, you see a draft ordinance for past due taxes in front of you. This went through the Board of Selectmen back in twenty thirteen, and in August of twenty thirteen, it did go to town meeting. It was voted down and at that time, the, the meeting minutes are lean. But there were comments as to this would just be another issue in the land use department. So not having been at that meeting, not really sure what that meant, but there's some concern for. Those who have past taxes, being able to be issued building permits within the town. And so Janice, do you want to speak to us about your request? Should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, so basically looking to get this ordinance in place to. Make sure taxes are paid before permits are issued. They've got four building lots now, I think on Clint Eldridge. I'm not sure if permits have been pulled, but I, the new owners have not yet paid taxes either July or January. So it can be, it's concerning. If there's a, something where the building official deems it necessary for. The home, whatever, to get the permit. Then we'll of course take a, you know, we'll look at that and allow, you know, the permits to be issued. But in the most part, we're just trying to get the taxes paid, people just, you know. Increasing the value of their home, but they're not willing to pay the taxes on it. So to me, it's a good move. The second part of this is if someone. Does work for the town, like towing or electrical work, whatever, and their taxes are past due. What I'm looking to do, any invoice they serve us for payment, that that be withheld to pay the taxes first. Wouldn't have anything to do with the wages if someone, you know, as far as someone's wages. But if we're invoiced with a bill and their taxes have not yet been paid. I'd like to see the, the town keep the funds for that.
Okay, so Janice, when the ordinance that you're proposing, did you make any additional suggestions or language that you've included on it?
No.
Okay, so what, what is in front of you went through the Board of Selectmen back in twenty thirteen. And what was added after discussions at the Board of Selectmen level, and I see Selectmen Blessington hearing, you may have recalled some of this. Was the concern if there was a health or safety reason, someone needed work done. Whether that be they needed work done on a furnace or, you know, some heating related, electrical related in their home. That with, with some communications from planning and zoning and, and building officials, that there could. Be an exception to this, so that no one would be left out in the cold, if you will. But that, it's another means to. Collect taxes.
I, I think in general, I think the principle's good. I would, I see a couple of very minor edits in section one A. And that is, I think there may even be just a spelling area where it says the building of planning and zoning official. I think that's supposed to be the building or planning and zoning official. And I would even clarify that wording a little more carefully, I would say the building official. Spell out the names, that's the proper title. And I would add in or fire marshal or planning and zoning. And the reason is, as I am both a building official and a fire marshal myself. Any of those three groups would have information or potentially would be attempting to abate a, a health or safety issue. So if, for example, there was a problem with, as you said, a heating system, if the fire marshal came to investigate a, a problem with a wood stove. And there was a permit needed to correct that, the fire marshal might be in a position to say to the town, allow them to have the building permit right away. So they could fix this safety problem. And that would be a reason to go around this, pay the taxes first thing. So I, I think that's pretty much clerical, it doesn't change the intent of it at all. That's, that was my only thoughts on reading through it.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't really have any problems with the, the first section. Because it had that escape clause, if you will, and if there was something with safety or whatever, or. You know, you had to widen the doorway or something for a fire exit or something like that, or, 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 you know, you got a CO call, they say, oh no, you gotta take that furnace out and change it or something. They used to give you that opportunity to go do that, but. I mean, o- other than an extreme situation like that. Seems reasonable.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's important that we recognize that both then and now, that, that the safety of our residents, right? Comes before all of this, and so we, we wouldn't want to jeopardize any of that. But that it is a bit frustrating that despite some of the. Communications and demands from the tax collector to, to get these taxes paid, folks are still moving forward and conducting business and. With funds to be spent, but not, you know, paying their taxes. Something we're all expected to do. No, she's up to the top corner.
Oh, okay, sorry, I, I only can use the glasses for close.
So would either of you, yes, go ahead.
Janice, just going back to the example you said of property being developed. Is it a fact that when, assuming someone already had a permit, they were building a house? If that property then sold and there was a closing, would the, would we be able to catch the taxes at that point? Is that still true?
Yes.
Okay, so what really what you're looking for in that is to, to preempt that process and say to someone, if you want to be doing this money-making venture and. And that they may end up not selling it because they may be building the house for themselves, you want to be able to get in sooner and, and make sure we collect the taxes. Before the problem developed further. Okay.
Yep.
Would either of you be opposed? I know Selectmen Blessington was a, a selectman at that point, if he could share with us maybe why, if there's any other reasoning we're missing, why this might have not been favorable at that time.
That would be prudent.
Okay, if you're, if, if you have anything to add to the conversation.
Well, I mean, the main issue that we argued on was in case, you know, you, you have to. Put in a new furnace there and, but, you know, that was around the time. When we had a problem with the tax collector, we had a business in town that the town basically shut the business down. For four, four hundred days. I don't know if you remember the equestrian center up there. The, we had a big snowstorm and it caved in the roof on there. Indoor, indoor riding academy, which was there, that was how they made their money. And so they applied, they were insured, they applied for new. Applied for a new real building permit and they almost got the building permit, but our, when, when land use agent at the time. Discovered that they were on twenty-one acres when the regulations. Said they had to have twenty-five acres. And they'd been running this for thirty-five years and all of a sudden, whoa, we're not giving you a building permit until you. Take care of that problem. And so they were trying to take care of it and eventually they got the regulation changed to twenty acres. But by that time, they'd been out of business for. Like well over a year. And if I remember correctly, it was almost a year, but then they went to the. To get their permit and then there were. Operations that had to take place, I think they had to put in a firewall, which they didn't have before, because when they had built the original place, that firewall was not required by them. So now they had, those twenty thousand dollar excess cost that they had to put in on that. So the insurance was going to cover that, so they, they were trying to run because it's still a stable, so they have to feed, they carry the horses all this time. And by the time they got through four hundred days, they finally got their permit, they could finally open up again, but they were so far behind in everything, including taxes. Because they hadn't paid taxes over the last year, because they had no money coming in. And. And so we felt, you know, this, this is the kind of thing where they basically got screwed by the town. And part of it was the taxes, tax collector at the time, kind of made me mad one time, so, so, you know, can we give these people a break? Well, they should have paid their taxes.
So it sounds like the comments at town meeting about the land use and one more issue in land use was that they felt like that situation was. Creating.
Yeah.
A hardship to someone, if you will. Okay, it's really hard to interpret when, you know, it's a one sentence, why, why the, you know, as, as Janice brought this to me. And we try to decide whether or not we should move this forward again, and whether or not there's an appetite from the townspeople for this particular ordinance. Try to understand what didn't make it something the townspeople could get behind.
So I guess the only other, the only other possibility would be some sort of an appeal in a situation like that. If, if there was an appetite in the townspeople to have some sort of an appeal, sort of like board of assessment, you know, or whatever.
Planning and zoning board reveals.
Yeah, but I think you're talking about the, the tax realm. And I think, you know, we all find ourselves, and any one family could probably come to you with similar. Series of unfortunate events that led them to why they couldn't pay their taxes. But at the end of the day, they, they want to build something else, you know, a business is a little bit different because they're trying to make the money to pay it back. And our families might feel the same way. And again, it's just another means of trying to collect. The equal share of our tax revenue.
The example that Janice gave us this evening seemed, you know, like, hey, what's going on there?
Right.
You know, and, and made us ask that question. Maybe there's a story behind that too, I don't, I don't know, but.
Yeah, and I think anyone could give us a reason why they didn't, I don't think most people go into it just to say, I'm not going to pay. There's usually a, a reason or a hardship and, and our, our tax office works really hard with people to, to work with them. If you will, so, you know, I think this is something. That is work having a conversation about, Mike, it sounds like you have some. That is worth having a conversation about, Mike, it sounds like you have some, um. Simple suggested edits in there, if you wanna send them off to, we can put them in a draft, we can talk about this again. And then potentially move this, um, towards a, um, a, a town meeting in the future. If you take, have some time to take a look at it, read through it, if there's something else you think should be in or any other additional research information. You need or want, let us know how we can help.
It, it all seems very, very reasonable, uh, but yeah, I'd, I'd like to think about a little.
Yeah, this is something that, you know, it's not, um, it's not the first time it's come up, but it's the first time it's come up for us. And after ten years, let's talk about it again and see if it's something we, we feel, um, moving forward and then hearing from our tax collector and how it can benefit. The town is an, an important piece of that, from my perspective. And again, she's not the first tax collector to bring this to us.
Hmm, yeah, I think this.
Okay.
I'll put together a couple ideas, you know.
Perfect, all right.
Oh, just, just one question, Janice. I'm sure you talked to other tax collectors as well, I mean, you, you, can you share anything, uh? What you found from neighboring towns or other, other towns with this matter?
Most of the collectors that I've spoken with about it have an ordinance already. But it's, uh, the specific in the statute says you have to have it ordered, the town has to have the ordinance in order to do this. But yeah, many towns have it and it seems to be working for them.
I guess it would be many of our chartered towns probably have some language in their charter. Right. If you can, if you have the opportunity, if you can share any of those towns with us, names with me and I'll see if I can pull up some of their ordinance to share.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
All right, that brings us to. Back around to President to speak, if anyone is in the room. Quite a bunch in the room, uh, thank you, John, for your input there. Um, no one in the room, so Mr. Tella, if you would like to speak, we have you to state your name for the record and limit your comments to two minutes.
Nick Tella, forty-nine Myrtle, uh, just touching base on, uh, restricting permits and such, I just, I think it's, uh. The government abusing its powers and, uh, and just overstepping itself. Um, there may be, you know, unlimited scenarios as to why, uh, that person needs to do an addition. Who knows and, and, you know, who are we to really judge? Because at the end of the day, you, you could put a tax lien and, and recoup that money eventually, maybe down the road or not. But it's not the role of the government to make life harder on people. Um, and also in reference, I, I went back and looked at the libraries meeting. Uh, they had mentioned the town was upset over the transfer, uh, minute twenty-six fifty-seven in their, um, video. Also, at twenty-nine oh nine, they said, uh, Board of Selectmen member justified, well, basically justifying why the library, uh, shouldn't be. Putting their trash in the transfer and then at fifty, uh, fifty minutes forty-five seconds. Um, the lady heads that, uh, committee said, Erica said it, um, the library is a town building, therefore. The propane, I guess, has to be purchased through town services. So, again, if, if they're the library and they're their own entity, you know, once the Board of Finance has approved their money, I mean, I don't understand why we are telling them. That they can't go get another quote. Um, so I think that just, uh, that, that understanding needs to be more clear. Like I said, that conversation happened at a ARPA meeting on, uh, Monday, where Erica told them they cannot do that, so. That's all I have for now, thanks.
Thank you, anyone else present to speak? All right, I will, I will, uh, take a point of privilege, um, we have a contract for propane of which the library is a part of. So, yes, they cannot contract with anyone else, why we have an active contract. And so, that was, um, conveyed to the library board chair, so that is accurate information. Um, we cannot contract outside of that contract. All right, good and welfare, if either of you have anything, please feel free to share. Uh, Mobile Food Share will be here at the Town Office Building tomorrow, January eighteenth from eleven to eleven thirty. As a reminder, it's open to all residents of the state of Connecticut. Um, please continue to support our small businesses and restaurants if you can. Um, the School Building Committee will be holding a community forum, January twenty-sixth at six-thirty at Hall School Gym. And via Zoom, so that will be a hybrid, uh, forum and whichever way people can participate. It's an opportunity for community members to share their feedback on the two schooling building options prior to the SBC identifying one project. Uh, for referendum at their February first, twenty twenty-three meeting. As a reminder, the second installment of real estate property taxes, personal property taxes and supplemental motor vehicle taxes are coming due. The final date to pay without interest is February first, twenty twenty-three. Um, I will note that seven of the eight counties in Connecticut are in the high transmission rate for. Um, COVID nineteen, uh, flu is out there among us as well as RSV. So, uh, I certainly encourage folks, if you're, uh, sick, stay home, uh, if you, um. Choose to wear a mask, we ask that, uh, you know, those, um, who are sick. Um, and, you know, potentially exposed, wear a mask in public, it is not a requirement in any of our town buildings. Um, we just ask folks, like everything else, um, to think beyond ourselves, um, during this difficult season. Anything else from either of you?
No, don't.
None, seeing none, I will make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-seven.
Second.
Second of my mic, this is a non-debatable matter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, have a good night, folks.